Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 23rd City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristi, can I have a roll call, please?
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Doning.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morset.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next I have approval of the minutes from the January 9th meeting. So moved. Second. Aye. Opposed? Okay, next I have approval of the bills with Mr. Watson.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the bills in the amount of $915,902.57, subject to the comptroller.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, next move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be the time. On forward.
My name is Patricia LaRue. I live at 49 Marcela Court, and I just want to give a shout-out to our utility board. They are the people who keep our lights on, our water clean, and our rates low. They were recently asked to be the first body to speak out on the Kenny Corridor Plan on what to do with the dams. And as I sat in the audience, what I saw is leadership from Adam Mikowski, who was even able to tell one of our city council members he had 10 seconds left, the dedication of Dwayne Peterson, who forewent his trip down to Florida to be part of the decision. I hope he made it there before yesterday. Patrick Richter, who as the newest member of the board, told us that he did his best, he did his research, and gave us his opinions. Kevin Swanson, who took the time to tour the hydro facilities and to interview the hydro operator, something even the Kenny Corridor Plan has yet to do. I appreciate Tim Thum. As you watched him, he was so openly candid about and human showing the struggle he was having with this decision. And of course, Diane Odine, for her sturdy hand at the helm, keeping it all together, telling people this is about policy. On the flip side, the utility director, Kevin Westhouse, who likes to always interject, was able to keep himself, let the people talk, let's hear what they have to say.
You're no good tonight, are you?
And just the fact that the board now has a new dimension as a capable body of professionals who are keeping the residents of River Falls as their number-one priority, and I really want to thank them.
Thanks, Patricia. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Ben Fox. I live just outside of the city at 680 Conroe Double M. I want to thank the council for considering a new bike and pedestrian plan. It's been quite out of date, and the county has updated theirs, so that's great. Second, I see well number five is down for quite a while with bacteria, and I was just wondering more about that, where the source is or that type of thing. You know, having a lot of private septic in that area, it'd be nice to know where that contamination is coming from. Thanks.
Thanks, Ben. Do you want to say something about that now, Kevin? Do you want to wait till we talk about it later?
Sure, I can quickly answer that. So well number five, in the raw water itself in the well shaft, we had a detect for coliform bacteria, and we've been over the last three months scrubbing that, disinfecting it. We get rid of it temporarily, but it keeps coming back, so now we just recently this week had it cleaned and televised, and we're considering the next steps with that. Though the water coming out of there was always safe because we chlorinated it, but the raw water before it got into the system had a detect for coliform bacteria, and that well's been shut off for about two and a half, three months, so.
Okay.
But we continue to try to get that problem rectified.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, anybody else in the audience? Otherwise...
Oh, there's one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up.
I'm Joyce Conley. I reside in the city of River Falls, but I'm here to represent the John and Alice Hansen Family Trust, which borders the 22-acre parcel on the east side of the Best Made Cookie Factory that is being considered for open bow hunting. We sent letters to all of council members and Mr. Mayor expressing our opposition to that, mainly because of the safety factor that there is nowhere to park other than on the highway to access that. And the second thing is that we have had many, many trespassers on our property, and that would, you know, put them right in an ideal spot to do that again. And we've had damage done to our crops by people riding dirt bikes through and snowmobiles, four-wheelers. So just to reiterate the fact that we are in opposition of opening that to hunting. Thank you.
Thanks, Joyce. Okay, anybody else? Kate, Mr. Bjork.
Yeah, I'd like to just make sure I throw out a shout-out real quick. I talked to a lot of people from not just River Falls, but from all over, and part of the reason I moved back to River Falls is because of the great services we have. And boy, did it ever show today when you looked out and you went out and you saw the streets cleaned and for both businesses, for residential, and you talk to people from neighboring towns, from neighboring states, from outside even this neighborhood, and people can't believe the service we have in this town for the snow plowing. And also, it goes, just as said earlier, too, our utilities here are second to no one, so whether the electricity and the water. So shout-out to what our city staff does with all the utilities. So, great job.
And I'd like to just expound on that a little bit and remind some people, too. I walked out to do some snow removal at my house, and my neighbor had already cleared around the fire hydrants. So if you have a chance, cleaning around those fire hydrants is really an important thing. If the firemen need to get there, they need to get there in a hurry, and if they have to dig it out, it's going to take that much longer. So please take a few minutes and dig out around those fire hydrants and help out, and shout-out to the citizens as well who are stepping up and doing those types of things, so. Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to have a little presentation from City Administrator, Mr. Simpson, on State of the City.
Well, good evening. I'm going to start with a short video and hopefully not a much longer comments, and then I'd be happy to answer questions. This is our annual State of the City. We switched to, we had the video, it seems like six years ago or so, and it's been a real hit. And then as the time has gone on, there's been requests for me to, which is surprising to me, but to make a few more comments in addition to the video to try to elaborate a little bit, so I'll be happy to do that. And the council is the first one to hear that this year. Well, let's get a little more volume first. The character of the town likely was founded on discovery, innovation, and finding a place with beautiful natural resources that could support a healthy ecosystem of people. Of how the community has come together, and the beautiful neighborhoods and community assets that have been built over time by many hands. So I think that'd be something certainly founders would be proud of.
Once down between the gorge, we saw, I think it was the rear of a mountain lion or cougar down there once.
One of my favorite memories from the Kenny was going down by the falls and playing in the waterfall with my cousins and...
And money was no object. What would you do?
First of all, I'd have a blast.
We need your help in planning the future of our great river corridor.
And it has the potential to not only change the physical landscape of our city, but how we interact with the river.
So this thing is founded on community engagement.
Yes, you have a history of taking chances as a community and saying, you know what? We think that this might work.
I think we're headed in the right direction, and I really applaud the process that this group has taken.
I think successful communities in large part are built by people who are thinking about future generations, not just about themselves.
We take a lot of things for granted that took considerable collective action and effort on the part of the community.
We had a major investment in River Falls of about $4.2 million in our power plant substation. And that substation now that it's renovated could provide electricity to all the residents and businesses in River Falls.
Now, when you call, and as part of our renovation, whether you're calling the city of River Falls or River Falls Municipal Utilities, you get a live voice.
People scoffed at the idea of building a library that was bigger than the whole existing municipal building.
Can you imagine the community without it?
It's a fortunate spot for us to be in where we've had some forward-thinking, proactive addressing those needs. And I predict in 2037, many communities will not be in the same positive circumstances that we will find ourselves hopefully in 2037 based on the work that's being done today.
The community has a history of really continuing its progress forward at a reasonable pace, but taking advantage of opportunities when they can kind of accelerate that pace at moments in time. We have a checklist of things we want to get done today, but we need to keep in mind the focus is really on how this is going to play out over the number of decades so that it can be something to be proud of in the future. Essentially, the year of tomorrow is a renewed focus on keeping the future in mind in all that we do today.
So thank you, Mayor, and Mayor Tolan and council members for your vision, your hard work, your trust, and your support. You put that trust and support in the city administrator and the team as we implement the programs and policies that you've helped shape. Our accomplishments this year are only possible with your wisdom and guidance. I also want to thank our residents for their partnership, engagement, feedback, support, and their civic pride. Finally, I want to thank the city staff for doing their work with such care and passion, for bringing their A-game to the new initiatives that seem to be continuously in the works. Yes, their plates are full, but that hasn't prevented them from taking the time to listen and do their best to make every interaction positive and outcome a success. We called 2017, the year of tomorrow, a year when long-term planning and implementing some of our long-term plans took center stage. It was a year when several of our decades-long visions were realized, or we're starting some new decades-long visions right now. Now, while the actual tomorrow or next week or next year are important, and we try to keep our eye on that as staff, it's really the 30, 40, and 50-year plans that are going to ensure the long-term viability of this community. Now, today I want to focus a few remarks around infrastructure, engagement, enterprise, and livability. Thirty-five years ago, we started planning for trail extensions that would provide an unbroken loop around Lake George. And in 2017, we completed two sections of this trail. And if you haven't had a chance, you should really, I'm encouraged you, to walk around and get a little different perspective of the Kenny. The white pathway portion of the trail has got a few friends over the last few years, and it's quite a nice trail loop that's been put together. In 2017, as you saw, we were nearing the completion of a power plant substation on Winter Street. That power plant substation was originally built in 1971. Now, this station is intended to increase our redundancy in the system, and as was mentioned, this $4.2 million project will allow us to serve the entire community for utilities if necessary. Now, planning for another big project, the North Interceptor Sewer goes back more than 20 years. The lift station near the Kenny Crossing of North Main is considered a temporary lift station. A temporary lift station currently serves about 27% of the city's existing development. And in our long-term vision in the Smart Growth Plan, that part of the sewer system is going to serve 42% of the grown city. So obviously, an important part of infrastructure for us. In 2015, we began planning in earnest to replace that lift station with a gravity sewer down to the sewer plant, and we've spent the past two years working with an engineering consultant, neighbors, and property owners, and finalizing plans for the project that's likely to begin in 2019. Community safety continues to be a city priority. We know that our public safety facilities are in need of significant investment in order to meet the demands of police, fire, and EMS services. This year, our team began feasibility studies on both a new police station, which was potentially built adjacent to City Hall, and at the same time, combined EMS and fire station feasibility. Again, planning for and affording the vision will take us some time. In December, we celebrated 20 years at the new library. Now, if you were around in 1997, you'll remember that a much bigger building, turns out about 10 times as big as the existing library, was not an easy sell, but the community saw it as a priority, and leaders persisted. And since it's open, circulation has increased by 80% and visitors by 94%, all the while increasing the amount and variety of services they provide as the times have changed. A River Falls resident, then a high school senior in 1997, recently wrote, "I remember being very proud of our community's decision to build such a beautiful library. I felt then, and I still feel now, that it conveys our shared values about access to information and caring for public spaces." Plenty of opportunities to witness our shared values on full display this year as community members engage in discussions about the future of our river corridor. We had a hard-working committee of 11. They planned six tech talks with topics ranging from Planning 101, Recreation, Tourism, and Economics. They also put in some good primers on hydroelectricity, river ecology, and federal hydro regulations along the way. A four-day design process, or community meeting, called a charrette, was also part of the process, and we worked together, develop, and react to various design concepts and scenarios. And I hope, like myself, you enjoyed the process and learned a lot. I'm proud of our community members for their civility and for their open-mindedness in hearing other points of view while thoughtfully considering their own. And we now are about halfway through this process of finalizing a plan to be adopted in 2019. So in February, the city council will consider interim steps involving hydroelectric facility relicensing as we move forward to that plan. And the council is going to provide staff direction on relicensing steps after hearing a recommendation from the Kenny Corridor Committee at their February 27th meeting. And then shortly thereafter, the committee and consultants will begin to finalize the larger plan, which is expected, like I said, to be adopted in 2019. We also had significant community member engagement in the Glen Park planning and renovation plans. The council approved a pavilion plan design in the fall of 2017 for construction that will begin in 2018. Additionally, the council and park board are working together on plans for new roadways, paths, parking areas, and other improvements, which may include a splash pad, a nature-themed playground, overlooks, and those projects are slated to begin in 2019. And I want to thank the members of the park board for hours and hours of time and talent. They've invested in that project to get us where we are with the Glen Park project. Now, in the video, you saw some red ribbon, September. On September 22nd, UW River Falls opened its Falcon Center after many years of planning and fundraising. The $63.5 million facility was the largest building project in UWRF's history. Two days later, Alina opened its clinic. The city has enjoyed a long history with Alina for over 34 years, and we appreciate the support they've given to the city and area nonprofits to enhance the wellness of our community. The following week, on September 27th, Winfield United Innovation Center held a grand opening. This is a 55,000-square-foot facility, which they have dubbed "A New Epi-Center of Research." Winfield has had a 27-year partnership with UWRF, and we expect that these new facilities will continue that partnership for years to come. On April 12th, the St. Croix Valley Business Incubator will hold a grand opening in the Sterling Ponds Corporate Park. And to date, this project has received over $1.6 million in grants, a million-dollar investment from funds from the River Falls Economic Development Corporation, over 153,000 corporate funding pledges to date from Wisconsin Credit Union, Three Square Market, St. Croix County EDC, and the Royal Credit Union. And in addition, as you know, the city was instrumental in securing the partnership and contributing the land and financing with valued at more than $600,000. This is a place for dreamers and doers, and we expect that this will be something that we look back on in 20 years with pride. In 2017, the city welcomed many new businesses. We saw a lot of expansion in the corporate parks with Best Made, NCCM, a number of small businesses invested in theirs. In fact, after our $30 million year of wow, we had a $10 million commercial year in 2017, which is would have been a year of wow if we hadn't just experienced that 2016, which was pretty incredible. Again, our 10-year average going into 2016 was about $2 million a year, so not quite the magnitude of 2016, but pretty significant. We did also see about $10 million in residential permits. That's an increase of about $1 million over 2016. And activities occurred all across the city. This year, we are working with the housing authority to begin comprehensive housing studies so that we can set a long-term vision for housing needs in the community. So yes, business is still booming in River Falls. This summer, the city partnered with the National Research Center to conduct its third comprehensive city survey, and we learned a few things. 93% feel the city of River Falls is an excellent or good place to live. Nearly all residents favorably rated the feeling of safety in the downtown. Those surveyed gave particular high marks for the city's overall appearance and for River Falls as a place to raise children. Both of these were an increase over the 2015 survey. Nine in 10 residents gave the natural environment in River Falls higher-than-average ratings compared to the national average. Use of the library was remarkably higher in this city compared to the national average. And the number of residents reporting they had volunteered in the 12 months prior to the survey is also ahead of the national average for other communities. And when asked about the most important facets of the community, the top two were safety and economy. Now, in addition to safety and economy, we know our community cares about the environment. In 2017, we met our goal of 10% customer participation in voluntary renewable energy green block program. Now, that's the third year in a row we were rated first in the state, and we moved to number fourth in the nation. Again, this is a voluntary program and demonstrates our customers' interest in renewable energy. Last year, we also assisted 175 businesses and individual customers in utilizing efficiency programs. We converted 75% of the city's streetlights to LED lighting, and we helped the school district save over $35,000 on their utility bill. In 2018, we'll continue to ensure sustainability by considering the environment impacts of our city's building projects, and by educating businesses, nonprofits, and residents through our robust energy efficiency and renewable energy programs. So, as we look back on our year tomorrow, we look forward to another 30 to 40 years of realizing our long-term goals and creating new plans for an even better tomorrow. Thank you.
Questions? Or comments from anybody? No? Thanks, Scott.
Thanks.
I just want to say a quick thing about, you know, every year we have the State of the City, and I hope all the citizens out there realize that the State of the City is great, and it's because of the citizens that we're in such great shape. All their support for the city staff and everybody at City Hall. They care about their city so much, they're, you know, support everything we do. They're volunteering. Everything they do, it all starts with the citizens, and we greatly appreciate everything you guys do for us, so thank you. Moving forward, we will close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on stormwater permit. This is 2017 Annual Report. It's resolution authorizing content of the 2017 Annual Report to discharge stormwater. And two of our staff members, Crystal and Zach, are going to give us a little presentation.
All right, Mayor and Council, thanks for allowing us the opportunity to... Sorry. Thank you. All right, thanks for allowing us the opportunity to come up and say a few words about the stormwater program in the city. I'm Senior Civil Engineer, Crystal Raleigh, and I have Zach Rannier, our civil engineer. He's new to us in 2017. He's been a great addition so far. Zach is going to talk to you a little bit tonight about the MS-4 permit program in general, and the six permit measures that we need to report on each year, and our compliance with those in 2017. And then I'll come in and talk a little bit about the Lake St. Croix TMDL that we need to comply with and to report on in 2017. So with that, Zach.
All right, so brief background on the MS-4 permit. If you don't know, MS-4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. It's a federal regulation as part of the Clean Water Act, and it was passed down to the states to administer. Wisconsin administered Phase 1 in 1997, which is for large communities, and Phase 2 in 2006 for smaller communities. And that's when River Falls was brought in. And then in 2014, they updated the permits with the new census, and cities like Hudson and several others were brought in at that time. As far as the permit, there are six minimum control measures, and they are public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, or construction site pollution control, post-construction stormwater management, and pollution prevention. All those, and some more data gets put together into an annual report that we submit to the DNR, and we also maintain a storm sewer system map in our GIS database. The first minimum control measure is public education and outreach. To achieve this, we had several elementary school presentations to Rocky Branch, Montessori, and as part of American Public Works Week, we presented to every elementary school in the city. We also presented to a UWRF class and gave a presentation to the Professional Dairy Producers of Wisconsin for their water tour. We also have a fun Plinko game that the kids love to play and learn about stormwater. We brought that out at the Customer Appreciation Event. We hold an annual contractors breakfast for all the contractors that do work in the city. And we are part of Range Rivers of Western Wisconsin, which is a group of MS-4 permitted municipalities that collaborate on public education and public involvement. And on the public involvement, the city has an adopt-a-pond program that allows residents to adopt a pond, which basically means they commit to cleaning up the pond twice a year, once in the spring, once in the fall. We have a rain barrel rebate program, which we revamped last year in a partnership with a Boy Scout named Simon Anderson to make our own barrels. With Range Rivers, we offer a mini-grant program to promote involvement from groups in our communities. And we had several student workdays from Rocky Branch, Montessori, Leadership River Falls Youth, and the Science Explorers Camp that was part of the Parks Rec Program. For illicit discharges, we had two that were reported to us. We investigated both of them and found that they were not illicit discharges. One was a leaky vehicle, and the other was the waste management facility that is permitted and inspected by the DNR. We also do dry weather outfall inspections to check for discharges. We did 38 outfalls, seven major outfalls, 31 minor outfalls, and found no discharges. For construction site pollution control, we had about 20 erosion control inspection days with 420 about individual site inspections, and we had some follow-up... days with 420 about individual site inspections, and we had some follow-up emails as well as five citations issued. For post-construction stormwater management, we issued seven stormwater permits. On the map, starting in the north, is the Villas of Sterling Pond subdivision. Below that and to the east is the Eagle Storage Site. To the west is NCCM. Below those, on the east, is Best Made. And on the west is Dollar Tree. Kind of in the center of the city is the power plant substation, and in the far south is Spring Creek Estates South Subdivision. And for pollution prevention, we had a couple staff training opportunities. We sent 10 Public Works members to the APWA Winter Maintenance Supervisor Certification. They all passed, and now we have all of our Public Works staff with that certification, which is a great thing for the city and a good thing for our winter maintenance program. I also attended the Minnesota Construction Installer Certification Program for Erosion Control. And we made several improvements at the Public Works Garage, including a pad for our recycle roll-off dumpsters as well as stormwater pond, and a pad for the future relocation of our salt brine tanks. We inspect our infrastructure every year. As part of that, we replaced seven structures. We maintained 52, and overall, we inspected 567 structures. And our mechanics at the Public Works Garage do a great job of maintaining the 147 vehicles and pieces of equipment that we maintain. And now, Crystal can talk to you about TMDLs.
So, Lake St. Croix is, has been designated as impaired for phosphorus. So, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and the Wisconsin DNR has decided that there's a certain amount of phosphorus that the lake can safely take in, and then they've divided that amount up between the dischargers and the watershed. And the city of River Falls is one of those dischargers. The list on the right also shows some other dischargers within the Lake St. Croix TMDL. So, in 2015, we did some research into the TMDL and tried to decide what does this mean for the city of River Falls. And we found that, you know, the city generates a certain amount of phosphorus, and we need to remove 47% of that phosphorus. That was our target that we had to hit. So, in 2016 and 2017, we spent those years modeling the city and modeling the various stormwater BMPs or best management practices, such as stormwater ponds, grass swales, infiltration areas, et cetera. We modeled those, and in 2017, with our MS-4 annual report, we were required to report on our compliance with the TMDL. So, that's what we're doing tonight. So, with that modeling, we found that the city generates 3,084 pounds of phosphorus on an average, on an annual basis. Multiplying that out by that 47%, we need to remove 1,449 pounds of phosphorus. So, going through our modeling, we used available information such as stormwater reports from various developments that have been going up through the years. We used our GIS that we have, some county data. We picked out these various BMPs throughout the city, determined what area drains to those and how they function. We put those into our model, and throughout this process, we modeled about 200 stormwater BMPs. And we found that they take away 1,462 pounds of total phosphorus. So, we are meeting this TMDL goal without having to build anything new, which is pretty incredible. It's important to note, too, that we haven't modeled everything in the city. There's a little bit of fluff room in there. We picked the low-hanging fruit and, you know, used the ones that we thought would give us the biggest bang first. So, we've got a little room to work there. So, this is really thanks to you, the Council. Thanks for being so supportive of stormwater throughout the years. Back in the late '90s and early 2000s, I'm sure it was tough to implement that ordinance that was more strict than anything else at the time. But thanks to that, we are where we are today, and we aren't having to construct anything. So, that's really great. And then I just wanted to share this graphic. This was from our TMDL compliance report. You'll notice, like I said, in the late '90s, early 2000s, that's when our ordinance came on board. And the colored areas are areas that we're seeing some phosphorus removal. So, as you can tell, not a lot of phosphorus removal right in the heart of the city, but our newly-developed areas on the outskirts of town, that's where we're getting all this phosphorus removal. There is an area right in the downtown that you'll probably notice, and you might wonder, how are we getting any removal in that downtown? 50 years, 100 years ago, stormwater was put into pipes and discharged directly into the river, and it's really hard to intercept that now and get that out. What we are able to do in the downtown is we go through twice a week during the growing season and sweep the streets. So, we are getting a very little bit of phosphorus removal from our street sweeping. The rest of the city only gets swept twice a year, but we really focus in on that downtown area since we aren't getting any other treatment there. So, with that, I mean, we've really kind of covered a lot here in a short amount of time. We did a little overview of the permit program, the elements of the program, and then TMDL compliance. So, with that, is there any questions?
I have one quick question for you.
Yes.
I'm impressed with the educational value that's been pushed on being water clean. My question, though, is what is a good target goal for the next two, you know, two years of foreseeable future for our total phosphorus level?
A target goal for phosphorus in the next couple of years here?
Yeah.
Well, we are meeting that TMDL. So, I, I mean, right now, we're kind of governed by that. I think the next step is, and the TMDL reports anyways, they say the next step is monitoring, you know, and see, is, is the lake cleaning up once everybody meets their TMDL? But I plan to, you know, really stay in touch with the Lake St. Croix Basin team and see how this shakes out and how, how's everybody else doing. I don't really have a good feel for that, and so, I think there'll be more to come on that.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
I have a quick...
Go ahead, Chuck.
Okay, the amount of phosphorus, you said the city's producing. Is that, is that measured at the end of, like, where do you measure that, or how does that come up? And is that any potential that upstream, what's coming into the city, also is measured into that, then?
Okay. It's actually, it's just within city limits, and it's not a measured amount. It's a modeled amount. So, it's based on various land covers. Areas that have high, you know, lawns and stuff, they, that really can produce some decent amounts of phosphorus. Industrial areas, they have their high discharger. Based on that wind-slam model is how, you know, we come up with how much is each section of town discharging.
Okay, so, that's a model. Do you have to actually measure it at some point, then?
There is no measuring at this point.
There is none?
No.
Okay.
Crystal, could, could, a couple of things. Last year, I kind of gave you a little bit of a nudge to more sponsorship for the ponds. And I know I asked that question, and I know there's good news there. Can you talk about those real quick?
Well, yes, I can, but I'll let Zach tell you most of the story. But one of Zach's first projects, when we brought him on, is let's get this Adopt a Pond program really rolling, and he did a great job, so I'll let you talk.
Yeah, so, we did make a lot of progress this past year. Going back, looking at the past couple of years, just to give some numbers, in 2015, I think we had five ponds adopted, 2016, one. And then last year, we had 16 ponds adopted. So, we went from 41% adopted in 2016 to 57% adopted this year. Part of that, we had an article published in the River Falls Journal. You may have seen, focusing on our Adopt a Ponds and several of our adopters. So, that was a great article and spurred even more adoptions. But there's still a lot of ponds left. We're only at 57%, so...
So, how many ponds is that left, Zach? Do you know? I'm putting you on the spot.
Oh. I think it's in the low, or mid-30s that are left.
And you'll get those all adopted out this next year.
There's a lot in the north part of town, the new developments, and the east, so...
Well, good job. I commend you on that. I was glad to see that there was some movement there. I had another question for, for Crystal, if I could. I'm, I really am interested in more about the stormwater, specifically the downtown. Are you able to model what the, what the total phosphorus, what the, what the total load would be that we would remove if we did something with stormwater today and segregated that stormwater, managed that stormwater better? How much more would that take out of the, how much more would that increase our number?
Right. We could do that. It would be, yeah, it would take a little work, but...
Come on, you don't know that off the top of your head?
No, no. I could give you a pretty good idea of how much, you know, the downtown area contributes of that, you know, 3,084, we might be oh, 50 to 100 pounds in the downtown area. So, if we, if we put something in, you know, at the end of the pipe, it depends what it is, you know, and how much room are we going to take up and...
Sure, sure.
You know, it could really vary a lot.
As that process goes on, and certainly, I put you on the spot, I apologize, but as that process goes on, I'd, I'd be very interested in that number of how much is reduced out of there.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just have one quick question. Is there any penalty for noncompliance?
With, noncompliance with the TMDL? I'm not sure how that's going to shake out. This is the first year that the Wisconsin MS-4s are required to report on this. So, this is the first time that the DNR is going to be hearing about how are they doing? But if we didn't meet our 47% at this submittal here, we needed to give them a plan to how are we going to get there and what, how many years are we going to take to get there?
Well, I just want to make sure the other cities are doing their part.
Right, yeah, I know. We'll, we'll have to see what happens here. This is the first time the DNR will have a look at any of this. Yes. That's, that's a good point, Reed. We are a tiny part of this thousands and thousands of acre watershed. Much of this watershed is rural, and a lot of phosphorus comes off rural areas. Phosphorus is primarily stuck to dirt, and it's stuck to leaves and stuff. So, the runoff that's coming out of the whole watershed is, that's a big deal. That's a lot of phosphorus. These municipalities that are within the watershed aren't discharging that much phosphorus. But this is a mechanism that they can have us to report on how much we actually are discharging.
I got one last question for you.
Sure.
I read that Man Valley was not included in this study. Will it be included in future studies?
It wasn't required to for this study because of its agricultural nature and the modeling guidance for this urban model. It's intended to be an urban model. It said if something is zoned agricultural and if it's being used as agricultural, you don't need to include it. So, that's why it was excluded. In the future, it definitely could be included.
Because runoff is a concern I have.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Good job. Oh, yeah. I guess that would help, huh?
So, your public hearing, Mayor, is still open?
Yep, let's close the, yeah, I forgot about the public part.
There's any public that wants to comment?
Is it, is there anybody in the audience that has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and reopen the council hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve ordinance number, I'll make sure I get it right here, I'm sorry, accept the annual report for stormwater permitting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, there again, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2018-01, admitting titles 9, 12, and 17 of the Municipal Code Regarding Hunting Within City Limits. This is the second reading. This ordinance would make an amendment to the city's hunting regulations. First thing it'll do is address changes in state law that have rendered our current regulations unenforceable and consolidate the rules into one location in our municipal code. Is there anybody in your audience that has anything they'd like to say about this? Come on up.
I'm actually here representing Paul Cudd and Sons, or Paul Cudd family. Our family owns the land to the north of the 22 acres that you guys are referring to as allowing public hunting. Our big concerns are very similar to the Hanson families. This land is really only accessed off of 35. Hunters are going to be coming in, parking on the shoulder, down on the, you know, on the side of the road. Hunters are going to be there in the morning and at night when traffic's, you know, on the 35 is at the busiest. Then, they're going to find ways that, you know, that's not a good spot for them to park. They're either going to go down back under the bridge and come and access the land from the Cudd family land, so they're going to be trespassing, you know, to get to where, because to get to some good hunting, they're either going to be going on the Hanson lands or our land. Otherwise, I just can't see why there's no place to park. It's just a huge safety concern with traffic, and that's just how our family feels about it. So, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
My name is Ben Fox. I live just outside town on Con Road MM. A lot of these times, it's about education. I believe if the city, when asked, when their permission is asked, if it is clear where the boundaries are, a lot of these concerns about property trespassing and such can be resolved. Secondly, typical of my life, my dad just hit a deer last week. There's also public safety about deer being unmanaged. I have found deer dead in Hoffman Park, which is near the Hanson property. So, managing deer populations is also a public safety issue and property damage issue. So, blanket, you know, disallowing it over property rights of people that do not live in a city like me is a little questionable, so, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve ordinance number 2018-01, but remove the 22-acre parcel, parcel number three in the, in the staff report.
Second.
Just, just to be clear again, too, now, if somebody is going to hunt there, they need to get permission, correct?
Yes, from the city.
From Mike.
Right.
Right, so, they, it's not just open to whoever wants to show up. They have to get permission.
Right.
And it's arrow, bow and arrow only.
Right.
I'll just add that the Park Board did talk some about the parking issue at that, and it was recognized, I think, well, the conversation at the Park Board had, you know, I would characterize it by saying that the Park Board didn't believe that much or any, if any, hunting would really end up happening there. But I do recognize the concerns of the neighboring landowners, especially over trespass, because there isn't parking, and, you know, I wouldn't put it past a determined hunter to, you know, do, people are very motivated to go hunting, so. So, I, I recognize that. I, I don't have a problem with taking that piece of property off the list as a member of the Park Board.
No, I moved a second. So did Sean. I don't mind whoever gets that second. My bigger concern here is, is has a state or the State Patrol been involved? Because it is a highway, and the state's had a pretty strong precedent between here and Hudson in taking out all of the interchanges and putting in bridges and making sure that the thoroughfares are safe for everyone. I think it is a serious concern, especially with that interchange pretty closely to the hospital and some of the snowdrifts, and, you know, we get into some of the winter times when we have traffic issues already with traveling on icy and snowy roads. I think this just could kind of contribute to that if we had a heavy early winter and people are out there wanting to bow hunt, and they've got their big buck, and they're all hyped up already, and now they're trying to pull out of there, they're getting stuck, and now we get a tow truck out there to pull them out and causing more traffic issues out there. So, I'm in favor of removing that 22-acre parcel as well.
Okay, so, I got a first and a second on the amendment.
Mr. Mayor, before you go to vote, if there isn't other questions, I guess... I have one question for you, Scott. Would we still be in compliance if we've removed that part, or would we have to add more to be in compliance with state regs? The council has the ability to make the decision. What you can't do is have a blanket prohibition of bow hunting. So, I think you'd, I mean, the city attorney and I have discussed that. I don't think you'd have any concern taking this out. The question for the council is, do you feel a substantive change from what was noticed in the first reading, which I think you could argue it is not, a substantive change to take this small area out of your map? But it would be good if the person who made the motion... made the motion would, would agree that this is not a substantive change.
This is not a substantial change.
And for the council to understand when they're voting that, uh, what, what our ordinance says about ordinances is you have a first reading, you're letting everybody know, hey, we're thinking about doing this thing. And then you have a second reading and a public hearing where people can come and say if they like what you're doing or not. And then you can make all kinds of minor changes or changes to the, um, kind of execution of the ordinance, unless it's substantive, like, you know, um, so I think our ordinance doesn't say, excuse me, I don't read in here that addresses for those. I mean, we provided a map for illustrative purposes and the council was expected to, you know, include this map as part of the, um, the understanding. So I think you can make that change without a problem and still be in compliance.
I can expound, I guess, on the motivation for my motion, but, um, my understanding was that we had to properly vet or properly examine areas in our, in our city limits that we could hunt.
Yeah.
And I think we were given direction, um, I don't want to put words in staff's mouth, but I think we were given direction that if we determined that none of these were appropriate hunting spots, we could remove them and still meet the state guidelines. Um, we're not doing that here. All we're doing is removing the twenty-two acres south of Highway thirty-five sixty-five northeast of Bestmead. And it is probably, it's the smallest parcel in the, in the three that we have to consider. So that's why my motion was to exclude that right out of the chute. So that's what I was thinking.
And the reason I, I really got my second motion in there is you really don't have any, I mean, they bring up valid points of the safety concerns of people parking on the side of the road or even getting dropped off there. And if they're not doing that, they're walking from by Benson or Quarry Road across the busy highway and we don't want to see anybody getting killed out there trying to walk across the, a highway and then having to go park over there to load up a deer or anything like that. So I think it's a public safety concern.
So the map, official hunting map that you're making can be amended from time to time by resol, by a simple resolution. So I don't, I think it'd be hard to make an argument that you can't make this change. Um, and it's within the council's prerogative to include or exclude properties as they see fit.
Okay. Any other questions? And so I got a first and a second on the, the ordinance excluding the twenty-two acres. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, uh, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero two, amending multifamily design standards in section seventeen point seven-three of the municipal code. This is the second reading. Uh, let's see. Anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing and I'll entertain a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Go for it.
I make a motion. We approve ordinance number, uh, two thousand eighteen dash two, amending multifamily designs.
Second.
Before we, um.
Questions or comments?
There we go. I have, um, problems, um, issues with this, um, ordinance, the way it's put together and the way we're looking at this. So I just want to make sure I understand this. So if we're looking at duplexes of homes, if somebody's in the northwest corner of the, um, city away from where university needs would be in it per se, we're still going to require that bicycle racks be put into duplexes that have four bedrooms in them? Is that what we're saying? So we're imposing, um, laws or ordinances that we're looking that, I could maybe potentially see if they were next to a university are required there, but we're looking for, um, imposing this outside of it, outside of these zones. Is that correct?
Yes. I think to make it, to make it.
Uniform.
Uniform, that's what you have to do.
So let me ask you.
Amy, am I, am I wrong?
Yeah, so as it reads right now, it's a four bedrooms or more. Then it would go through multifamily design review anywhere in the city.
All right. So let me continue on that topic then. So, um, right now, if somebody comes in and they have a permit and require a permit for a duplex, we don't just issue a permit without reviewing their plans or their thoughts. So could we get away with not even having this ordinance amendment and just saying we would suggest or could there be a suggestion? Or if somebody, I'm going to turn it around the other way. Somebody comes in and it's, um, Joe that wants to build a duplex for, um, families, um, for starters, because they want to have a job here in town, could they have a, um, exception that we, they don't need bicycle racks for their kids or for themselves at their, um, at their duplexes that they're, that are being built? Are we, I, I just see that we're creating more hassle here than it's really, um, than we should, but.
The way it's written currently, they would have to go through the variance process. And, and so the, what happens right now is somebody comes in with a duplex.
Yep.
They get a building permit.
Right.
So there's no site review of the project at all. Um, so that's what we were trying to deter on this, on this ordinance.
So it's not like a planned, um, unit development where there's a site process, um, where, where the, the site itself goes through a whole review process and that in this particular type of development, that just doesn't happen, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So we, somebody comes in, I'm, um, excuse me for my ignorance, but so if somebody comes in and they're, they're looking to build just a duplex, we do not do any review of their site or their, their requirements. Is that right, Amy?
Again, it's a building permit. So we're looking at the building only.
Just at the building only. Okay. And then we're looking to add this on. I'm sorry, council member, oh, Dean.
Uh, thank you. I'd just like to, um, uh, you know, remind the council that this is for a particular type of duplex where there's more than, more than four bedrooms.
Four or more.
Per unit. Um, uh, or four or more, which is not actually your typical duplex, I believe, in this, in this town. Um, and also I'm, I'm in favor of this, even if it were smaller duplexes. Um, we have the Blue Bike Program. We are, on our agenda is transportation funding. Um, there are trails being built in Sangre County and I think the more bike friendly, the more, um, we can encourage bicycles and the safety of bicycles. I know that, um, there are many stolen in town, um, uh, the better. I think, see, this is a very minor expense, um, in, uh, to put a little bike rack in outside of duplex. So I'm in favor of it.
I agree.
I just have one question for you, Amy. Uh, so in, in section three, uh, bicycle parking, it says for number four, it says bicycle, our bike parking should be located near building entries and shall not be permitted in the front yard, uh, shall not interfere with pedestrian circulation and shall be well lit. So, I mean, I think that kind of contradicts itself. I mean, I, I guess I'm asking, can I get some clarification on that? Because if you have a main entry, um, say that building that went over by Dairy Queen there, um, that building comes in and this is saying that we need to put that bike rack on the side of the building or the back of the building and then also install an extra light for that. And at that point, you're probably going to want to install a sidewalk around the side of the building just to the bikes. I mean, it's, I think that's kind of, uh, contradictory and I, I really don't see why there'd be an issue with having a bike rack out in front of that building if it looked nice.
So actually with that example, the parking lot is on the side of the building.
Yeah.
Um, so the bike rack could be on the side of the building. I think it's specifically just stating that it doesn't need to be in the front facade of the building.
So people come up and they just lay their bikes right out front. I mean, that, this ordinance isn't going to stop them from doing that. This just says the builder has to put a bike rack out on the side of the place. There's nothing that says that people have to actually comply with it.
Correct.
You know, so I, I'm kind of curious why we'd even need that and I'd be in favor of striking four. I mean, it seems like it's just more, more work that needs to be done there in that ordinance.
I think most, most, this is going, most of this is going after, will be for people that are renting. Majority of it will be the college kids. College kids have bikes. So this way, and it's our way of saying, instead of laying your bikes all over the yard, put them in the bike rack. Will they do it? No. Are we going to have somebody?
I think they will.
I mean, most of, most of them will. I shouldn't say no. Most of them will. Some of them won't. We're not going to have people walking around, hey, put your bikes away. No. But at least we're, it's a way to say, hey, here's a bike rack. You got to have it. Use it if you want it. Most places don't have bike racks. That's why they're laying all over the place.
Right. My, my, my issue here is though, it says it needs to be by building entries. And in a lot of these buildings, the building entry is in the front of the building on the street side.
In some of them, yes.
But in this case, it's kind of restricting them to put it by a building entry, but also can't be in the front entry and it has to be well lit. So there's three items there that kind of contradict each other in my mind.
Amy, may I ask, um, variances are allowed for this ordinance as well, correct?
Sure, they could go through the variance process, but I would say that, you know, staff's going to look at every site plan and work with the developer.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, you understand that there's an applic, there's app, uh, applicability portion to this ordinance change and then there's the bike rack portion.
Right.
So, so it's not just adding bike racks to these. It's applying the design standards to the larger duplex, duplexes was one of the main aims.
Was the main thing.
Um, so the bike racks were an element of the design standards, um, but there's other design standards that would be applied then to these larger duplex units. So I think from my conversations with you, you all understood that, but I just, I guess for the record, would say this isn't just a bike rack ordinance.
Oh, I totally get that. I just want to make sure that we're not building a, an entryway or a building around a bike rack. I mean.
So you could, you could agree with adding design standard review for large duplexes and not agree with adding a bike rack requirement to large duplexes. Um.
I'm in favor of it. I just think.
But you couldn't do one without the other because if you don't apply the design standards, then some of those don't. But the, the bike racks also apply to other things in that design standard area. So the, the four units and the six units apply to these bike rack changes too. So there's, there's two things working together, which the planning commission has talked about and I think understands what they're suggesting based on what they've observed in the community and asked staff to kind of.
So let me go on then. So on that duplex and that, if you're looking at just overall ordinance, it's three plus bedrooms. Four bedrooms is just what you have down for the, um, bicycle rack. So on your ordinance, in the original, it's three bedrooms or more. So we're going to be looking at those, um, which are smaller duplexes that might be more for your family size and less for your, um, university housing. Are we just looking at the duplexes? Are we looking at this going for any multi, um, dwelling units? Because if you did that, my gosh, you could look at that new unit that, that got turned down on, um, South Main Street and you'd be looking at a bicycle rack there that'd be close to three hundred feet in size. And that's just not a little bitty, um, and that's the truth. It'd be two hundred and sixty-plus, um, feet that would be required. So are we just looking at duplexes on this? And is it for three plus for overall and only four or more for bicycles or, um?
So not to stomp on, on, uh, Amy's area of expertise, but you're, I'll give you the, my perspective and then that'll be a test, um, to see if I'm wrong and then you guys won't have to admit if you, if you were thinking the same way as me. But, so right now, we have these general provisions that apply for multifamily residential designs, which are three plus unit buildings. What this, the ordinance change in front of you tonight adds duplexes that would have eight units or more total. So two, duplex has two, two dwellings and has, um, and if, in this case, if it has the four bedrooms in each, you'd have eight. So that's a pretty big complex, so to speak. Maybe it's not to some folks, but that would add it into this multifamily with the three plus unit. Um, but two, three unit, two, two, three bedroom units together wouldn't be applied to the standard. They would still be coming to get your building permit. Um, and then the bike rack stuff applies to all of them then. So whoever you put in that, uh, if you put the duplex in, they're, they're part of the bike racks. And if you don't put the duplexes in, but you still want the bike racks, it applies to everything in that art, that multifamily residential. And obviously, we have the complexity of being a college town. So trying to carve out the multifamily that is not student housing or not labeled as student housing from that that is, is difficult to do. Um.
I would just say that, you know, we have multifamily housing on the east side of town and on the north side, or, well, certainly some newer, larger multifamily housing on the east side of town. And there's a lot of kids. There's a lot of bikes everywhere. I think having bike racks is a good idea. I also agree that this ordinance should, or that the multifamily residential design standards should apply to the, um, to the du, to, to the units that are being, uh, put forward here. So I'm in favor of this ordinance. And, and my only question, you know, related to what, uh, Mr. Gagne said is that, you know, he brought up this part, piece about the front yard, uh, in item number four, bike parking shall be located near building entries and shall not be permitted in the front yard. Um, if the front entry, what's the yard and what's the entry, I guess, is the question we're trying to get at. A bike rack near the, um, near the, uh, front entry, but not in a grassy part of the yard? That's what I'm assuming this is. If you've got a bike rack next to the entrance, that's fine. You're not going to stick a bike entrance in the grassy part of the front yard. Am I interpreting that correctly or not?
Again, it's really going to depend on the site layout and the building plan. I would prefer that they were not in the front yard and yes, they would need to be on a hard surface.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in, I'm in favor of this ordinance. I am moving that we strike, uh, number four from section three.
Okay, so there's no second. So I got a first and a second on the original ordinance. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Next move on to consent agenda.
Can we do a vote on that? Just so we, I know we heard, but I just want to make sure we all have it on record of who said aye and who didn't.
So we have, uh, one name, Councilmember Bjork. Was there anybody else?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next move on to consent agenda. Uh, first one is a acknowledgement of the following minutes. River Falls Housing Authority from twelve seventeen, the Park and Rec Advisory Board from twelve thirteen, the Historic Preservation Commission from twelve thirteen, the Plan Commission from one two, the EMS Advisory Board from twelve four, the Library Board from twelve four and eleven six, and Utility Advisory Board from twelve eighteen. Um, oops. Hang on. I'm all screwed up here. Sorry. The next one is a resolution supporting an application to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for funding through the Transportation Alternatives Program. Oh, there it is, right there. Uh, this is for a TAP funding for the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, uh, to prepare to update the city's nineteen ninety-five bicycle and pedestrian plan with implementation anticipated in two thousand twenty-one or later. In order to proceed with the grant application, the city council resolution is required that demonstrates political and financial support to the project. Um, the next, uh, seven is a resolution approving city administrator annual performance review process. Next one is a resolution approving percent for art policy. Uh, number nine is a resolution approving option agreement with interfacial consultants. Uh, this resolution would provide the option agreement with interfacial consultants involving lots B and I in the Sterling Ponds Corporate Park. Does anyone want to poll anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll six, eight, and nine.
Six, eight, and nine?
Yep.
And I'd like to poll, uh, number five, F.
Number F, okay. Anything else? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda items five, A, B, C, D, E, G, and seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Gagne, I'll go with you first. You got one, you got the F in number five?
Just wanted to give a brief update in this, uh, board, library board minutes. There is a couple of things there on a position description for library director in retirement. Um, the library board. The library board has been working towards, uh, a position description for some time. Um, that is being finalized with, uh, Karen Bergstrom from HR, as well as we did get a retirement, uh, announcement from, uh, Nancy Miller for May. I just encourage any community members, if you see Nancy out in the community, make sure you thank her for all her hard work and dedication to our community and the success of our library. Um, that being said, we are gonna be starting the recruitment process here shortly for a new library director. I move for the approval of five F.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, Mr. Downey, you number six?
Resolution supporting an application to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for funding through the Transportation Alternative Program, TAP. Um, I'm very much in favor of this. Uh, if we get this funding, it will not only allow for creation for improved modes of transportation, the funding will help realize the potential for creating more ease of use. This is why I believe bikes are important, uh, which leads to a, a better overall comprehensive plan. When you have ease of use, it attracts more people, cause you can get through and out of your city quicker, which is good for everybody. And it's not only a good use of getting a grant, but in the long run, it brings down the cost of living for everyone, so. With that, I move approval of consent agenda item number six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Uh, Mr. Downey, number eight.
Um, resolution approving percent for art policy. Uh, I think this is great, um, and I, I think this is gonna improve community involvement. Um, what I'd like to see is our departments and committees being able to tap into the arts and communicate, conveying inspiring about our history, our parks, our natural resources, with this res- you know, with this resolution here. So, um, with that, I move for approval consent agenda item number eight.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I have some comments about it.
Yep.
I, I do like the, the public art policy. I do have some concerns about adding additional costs to pub- to public projects. I don't, I don't like the optics of that, I don't like how that, how that feels, and it just, it's, it's already public money that we're spending. I'd rather see us allocate some money out of the general fund, uh, for this type of, of stuff. Continuing again with promoting those arts, but I'd like to see us fund it a different way. Um, I don't know that I'm really prepared to make any kind of motion here, but, um, I don't, I don't know, I guess I'd ask to see what my other council members think, but I, I don't like the funding mechanism adding to the cost of a, of a project already, and it can get fairly sizable. Power plant building is a good example, it's $4 million. You know, if we're taking part, parts of that to, to fund this, it just, it just adds to those costs. I just don't like the optics of it.
I would agree.
I had a question regarding this. Um, is this a requirement? I mean, if we pass this, is this a requirement that we have to do this? Or is this something that we can elect to do? Cause it looks like it's very much so that we have to do it up to the 1% mark.
I mean, it's policy direction for the staff when they're putting together projects, so as we put together projects, then we would be planning for, for this. It says no more than 1%, so it's not, it could be zero and still be within the policy.
There's also a cap on that.
Up to 100, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm in, I'm in favor of the sediment. I don't know if I'm in favor of the ordinance. Uh, this is something I had a conversation with somebody else about. You know, we're, we're looking at a concept on Glen Park, um, and one of them concepts on the side of the new pavilion is some nice artwork. I think it's a great idea. Um, I don't think it should be a requirement or in a policy saying that, yeah, we should probably do this on all our public projects. It should be just up to the council at that time, um, to make a decision. Hey, this is a great fit for this project. Um, I'm definitely in favor of the sediment, though.
I guess I'd make the, uh, point that, you know, I'm, unless you go ahead and, and, and put a mechanism in and plan for these things, they don't tend to happen, um, even at the Plan Commission level. So, um, I think this gives the, uh, the staff direction to, uh, that we value, you know? The, the art, I, you know, you look at the, um, Electricity Box Art Program, it's been incredibly, um, uh, popular. Um, there are other pieces of art around town, you know, that we funded in one way or another, and public groups also could do fun art. So, um, to me, it's an enhancement, um, to the community. Uh, it makes the community more attractive for residents and for others who come here, and, um, I'm in support of it. I, I, I would be absolutely willing to, uh, and interested to talk about another funding mechanism when we get back into the budgeting process, um, so, and, and kind of revisiting this. So I, I understand your concern, Mr. Morissette.
I, yeah, I'm, I guess I'm just wondering, and, and I think we all support the art piece, and I, I don't want, I don't want to give the perception I don't. I just, I'd, I'd almost like to see if we could ask staff to come back with another funding plan or another option for us to consider. I don't know if that's, again, I don't know if people are, are interested in asking staff to come back with something else here, or if they just wanna move on tonight.
Could I suggest an amendment?
Yes, cause I'm having a hard time figuring out what I'd amend.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the resolution, um, and in the second, um, whereas, it's a, it currently reads, whereas River Falls Creates will allocate up to 1% of eligible construction costs from public construction projects greater than or equal to $100,000. Um, I don't have any specific wording, perhaps staff could get back on this, but I would, uh, I would amend this resolution to read, to be funded out of the, um, the project budget or the general fund.
Second.
But is that still a requirement?
I, I read this, of, of course, I, I read things as a lawyer. Allocate up to 1% means you can allocate .0001.
When does that decision get made, though?
Um, I, I think that is, um, probably part of, if, if it's a project greater than or equal to $100,000, I believe that comes before the city council. So that would probably be part of the budgeting process.
So this is a policy, so it gives direction to staff about the direction the council wants to go on these things. So, if, if the council is not interested at all in this, then that would give us clear indication that we don't consider that when we're doing the public projects. If the council said, we're in favor of it, but it's gotta be a $5 million, you know, we only wanna do it for the new police building. We don't wanna do it for small projects, because that's not what we wanna do. That would give us direction that, okay, now we don't have to worry about, you know, 90% of the projects in the CIP, we don't have to, to take this in. So we're just trying to put forward a policy that help the, the staff understand what emphasis do you want? Because we've already had discussion internally now with some of these projects saying, well, let's add, you know, this is a good place to put art in, let's, let's do it, and then we're kinda going, well, does the council really want us to be spending money towards that? And now, of course, that would come forward with some of the project funds and it'd have to be allocated. So I don't know if that made it clear or not, but this is just kind of narrowing the things a little bit for staff. This is, it's an up to 1% policy. Some of these policies across the country are written as a solid, you know, we will put .5% or 1% of every project over so many million, and that'll be set aside for arts.
Telling staff is, they can put this type of a feature into a building proposal or into a development proposal, a public, uh, proposal.
Right, and then.
But not more than 1%, but something up to 1%.
Or $100,000 on a $5 million police building.
Up to.
Or it could be a hundred bucks, you know?
But it says we will, uh, allocate up to 1%, so it's almost like we're doing it.
It sounds, yeah, sounds pretty mandatory to me.
But you're gonna put 80% of that.
But at that, at the time that that's presented, then, do we get to decide what that percentage is? Even if it's zero? Is that, is that what you're saying, Diane?
Uh, yes, I believe that, that it, it could be zero or something, like approximating zero. It, this, this is incredibly flexible, up to 1%, it can't be more than 1%. But it can be, like.
Once we have the moniker of River Falls Creates, which is, you know, you could, was I thought a good way to do it, then we can say, when we're doing a CIP, you can say, alright, you know, this is engineering and consulting, this is construction, here's River Falls Creates, portion of the project.
Alderman, or Alderman person, oh, Dean, what was it that you said? Did you say, did you still have some limit, or did you have it open-ended, or how did you word it?
Oh, I, I just worded it that it could be funded through the general fund as well as through the, um, construction budget.
Okay, and did it still keep that limit on there then? So it's still, okay, so we still have the limits?
The, the funding mechanism was the only.
If I could ask, uh, staff a quick question. Would this affect, I mean, again, the dollar amounts are, are not always significant, but would this affect application? I'm thinking of the Glen Park Storm Shelter. If we would've put an allocation in there 1% for that, would the, would the, would the FEMA grant have said, well, you get all that except they line that one out, that doesn't get included in the total? How does that work, in, in general? And I know I'm asking you a real crystal ball question here, but.
Yeah, I mean, they would look at, uh, those grants are all based on what are the eligible expenses, so, uh, without reading the grant to know whether public art is, is included or not, I mean, um.
I can tell you that there's a lot of stuff on that building that isn't included in the FEMA grant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And this would be, this would be one of them that probably goes outside the grant, okay?
Now, I guess I'd feel a little more comfortable, and maybe I wanna get a little feedback from the council of, um, changing the will to a may. I mean, it still sends the same policy sentiment to the community that we're gonna do that, but it doesn't give the implication that we have to do it. And for future councils that wanna have a different, uh, opinion that, hey, now we have to do this, cause that's what it says. I mean, I just, I feel uncomfortable with it, especially for the taxpayers of the community, so. I'll make a motion that we, uh, amend the whereas, um, River Falls Creates will allocate up to 1% of eligible construction costs to River Falls Creates May allocate.
I'll second that.
So, now you vote on that amendment.
So, yeah, you didn't make an amendment, did you?
I did make an amendment.
She made the amendment, I seconded the first amendment.
But now we have another amendment.
Okay, we'll, we'll, okay, we'll do on the, the, the second amendment, which is Mr. Gagne's amendment, changing will to may. I got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go back to Diane's, which was changing it from, um.
It could be funded out of it.
It could be funded out of the general fund too. So I got a first and a second on that, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, back to the original resolution.
As amended.
As amended.
Twice.
Twice. I believe I have a first and a second on that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We've covered that one pretty good.
Yeah, we, yeah, move on. Okay, let's see, Mr. Downey, number nine.
Resolution approving option agreement with interfacial consultants. Let's see here. I'm just curious, uh, and, you know, they're, they're talking about what they produce. I have some question marks about that, since I'm not entirely clear about it. Does anything that they make would have any effects on the environment or the water? And also how many jobs that they might be producing?
I think if there was any effect on the environment, they would have to probably disclose that or get special permits, is that correct?
This is just an option.
Yeah, it's just an option.
Just an option, yeah.
Not even the developer.
I mean, I can speak to the interfacial consultants, what they, their business. Their business is in compounding, so they, they, they try to make things, uh, let's see if I can remember the slogan, um, lighter than air, stronger than steel, and cheaper than dirt. Um, and a lot of their compounding is actually with recycled materials, so. You know, one of their products is magma composites, which is a, as the name might imply, if you think about it a little bit, is volcanic ash, um, is used in the product, uh, rather than, I believe, uh, um, polychlorides and other, other resin products. So it's usually a mixture of things, but the, I mean, all of these industrial uses have, some risks to them based on the, the materials, and they have responsibility to handle those appropriately based on what the materials are. And then we do have some prohibi- prohibitions in our covenants, um, about certain things, hazardous waste and things that can't be brought into the park, so, um, that'd be part of our final due diligence at, at, um, at time of the project construction. And employment levels, you know, this, the project that they've got, um, going now is, um, I think they're, they're in the, uh, early stages, so maybe eight to 12 people involved in different ways with the project, um, but it's an 80,000 square foot facility, so, yeah, a number of people working in it, um, to produce, to produce, uh, in that size of a building. Does that answer your questions?
Um, yeah, I think it does for the most part. Sounds like we do have the environmental concerns addressed. I just wasn't familiar with the, uh, nature of what that business did, so thank you for answering that. Uh, Mr. Mayor, move approval for consent agenda item number nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, next move on to ordinance resolution, uh, ordinance 2018 dash 03. This is an ordinance annexing certain territory of the Town of Troy. Uh, it'd be the, it'd be the land owned by the City River Falls, Curnahouse, and Evan Trust, the River Falls School District, and the Johnsons. Uh, this is a first reading. This is, uh, an ordinance annexing four parcels of territory in the Town of Troy into the City River Falls. Uh, it's been through the Planning Commission, approved a resolution recommending annexation and temporary zone A agriculture, an amendment to the official maps at a January 2nd meeting. The second reading will be at the February 13th meeting. Does the council have any questions on this? Otherwise, move on to ordinance number 2018 dash 04. It's an ordinance, uh, annexing certain territory of the Town of River Falls, um, to the City River Falls, uh, let's see, same thing. This went, uh, through the Planning Commission on, on January 2nd, and the second reading will be on February 13th. Anybody have any questions? Okay, next move on to, uh, what number is that? It's a resolution for the, well, it's number 12. It's a resolution regarding purchase of the water and wastewater SCADA systems, and staff members, uh, Greg and Ron are here, I think. There they are. They're gonna give us a little presentation on this.
Yes, thanks for having us.
Make everybody's life a lot easier.
Alright, so we're here to talk about the, uh, water and wastewater SCADA system, which has aged quite a bit over time, as you might imagine. I'm gonna give you a short, uh, sort of overview of what that is, and Ron will get into the details of the proposals we have and, and the budget and that type of thing. So, supervisory control and data acquisition is what SCADA stands for. Uh, it's really just the computers and the hardware that run our water and our wastewater systems. So we spend a lot of energy taking that water way up into a water tower, and eventually it flows down into someone's house, or is used in some manner, ends up in the sewer, and is treated, and then put back into the, the river. So the, the water SCADA deals with the water towers, maintaining proper water levels in them. Uh, in the winter, monitoring the temperature of the water tower to make sure that it doesn't freeze, and things like that. With the wells, it's how long are the pumps running? Automatically turning them on and off when they're needed, things like that. Uh, with the booster stations, that's maintaining correct pressures in our, uh, water mains, and, and also monitoring those pumps for failure and various items like that. The system that we're looking at can also help us identify problems in advance, provide some reporting for the DNR, and in general, just identify long-term trends, so we know if, uh, equipment's performing adequately, or if we need, uh, maybe an additional investment in various parts of the system. The wastewater SCADA is very similar to the water SCADA, just, uh, the other end of it. So, that was my joke. You can lie, that's alright. You gotta have one, right? To keep everybody awake. So the wastewater facilities, the SCADA there monitors the day-to-day operations, helps staff keep things, uh, flowing smoothly. Uh, controls the pump speeds, the levels in tanks, things like that. And, uh, I think you heard one of our lift stations is responsible for a huge amount of sewage that's, uh, going through our system, and it monitors those stations and makes sure they're functioning properly and correctly. Uh, in addition, DNR reports, long-term trends, and aiding and troubleshooting, all kind of similar things to the water SCADA. And with that, I'll hand it off to Ron for you.
Okay, I'll just cover a little bit of the background. I think, uh, it was about two years ago, Kevin and Greg Kaler gave a talk on the water system, and they kinda explained.
and they kind of explained, years ago, our first water system, the way it worked, there was a steam engine down by the river, and they pumped out of the river, there was a masonry tank up on top of the mound where our current mound reservoir is, and somebody would turn that pump on and watch it, and they could see it, and when it overflowed, they'd shut the pump off. So, you know, this works a little bit the same way, except we don't have anybody watching, it's the SCADA that watches. So it monitors those tank levels. So the tower level communicates back to the master at the water, and that will communicate with the wells and turn wells on and off, and that'll do that 24 hours a day without the manpower. So it is, you know, it's kind of the bare bones, and it just expands from there, but it's a really important part of our system. I mean, it's, it's one of the things we really rely on, and something we really need to work. You can see the existing SCADA is approximately 20 years old, some parts are even older. The primary or the master PLC at the water department, I've had three different contractors telling me they can't get parts for it anymore. That's kind of the brains of the whole system, everything in the water system has to run through that. We've been experiencing high communication failure rates, some of it are radio-related, some have been, our SCADA system isn't dialing out to the operators, and you can see that the next line, failure to notify personnel. And then just some of the deficiencies in the current system, lack of redundancy, where we don't have a backup to systems, because systems always fail, to have backups is crucial, obsolete parts, again, failure to notify personnel, lack of real-time offsite troubleshooting information. There's things like, not everything has power fail alarms, that's real important, you know, a number of things like that, where we, we can add monitoring such as flood levels in wells. Right now, we don't have any flood levels, so if a pipe would break and you'd get water on the floor, somebody gets called out before it becomes a major issue. In the CIP budget, you can see for the 2017 through 19 CIP, we had 200,000 allocated for water, 200 for wastewater. So 17's budget was 100,000 each, and then we're kind of looking at it as a gradual process. And if you look at the next slide here, it ties in, so our quotes, our PJ Cortons was 173, 940, Automatic Systems was 324, 548. And I think one of the questions asked at the utility board was, you know, wow, that's a lot, that's almost 100% difference, you know, are you sure these Cortons can do the job? I've worked with both of these companies, they've both done good work. Cortons did come, they came, they spent the whole day in River Falls, they went to every site, took pictures, took notes, I had email contacts with them, phone conversations, you know. And when they got the proposal back, it was a lengthy proposal, 15 to 20 pages, they had every site documented exactly how they'd handle it, what they'd do at every site, and from what I can see, they had everything on the money. I mean, everything was, they listed all the equipment, it's just the way I guess I would have wanted it done. So, and Automatic Systems came in with a good proposal, too, as far as equipment-wise, but you can see, maybe it's just a difference, one is a little more hungry than the other. You know, it could be, we have plenty of work, we'll throw a number at it, if we get it, great, if we don't, we have enough other work to do. So what do we get for that, you know, $173,000? So the software program that'll run the water and wastewater systems, a reliable radio communication system, so that we're, everything is, we're not, we're not having data fails, modern-supported PLC hardware, updated everything, most of it will be all Allen Bradley programmable logic controllers. And the redundancy that we need, remote accessibility, so operators will be able to access this from their home, so, or I will, so if we're having trouble in the water wastewater system that day, worried about it, I can bring it up on my home computer, take a look at it, make sure everything is good before I go to bed. And, you know, just the reliability, that's the most important part of it, is reliability, to be able to trust that system, because it's important systems on both ends. So thanks for letting us address the council, and any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, anyone?
I have one quick comment. I'm totally in favor of this, we definitely need it if our system's 20 years old and not calling out when it needs to. Just, so folks at home, didn't get the right idea, you mentioned pulling water out of the river on a couple of occasions, and that happened maybe in the long ago past, but we're pulling water out of the ground.
Out of the ground, that was in the 1800s.
Okay, and putting it into the river, that is true.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
With that, I'd like to move for the approval of the resolution regarding purchase of the water wastewater SCADA system.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, we will have a presentation by Carrie, will give us a presentation on a strategic plan update.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Council. So I'm back again to give a presentation on the fourth quarter 2017 strategic plan update. So the strategic plan is a guide for city staff on where the city invests its time and resources, and there are five strategic plan goals that we focus on. The first goal is ensuring financial sustainability, and currently, all four of the targets are being met for this goal. The second goal is consistently delivering quality municipal services, and again, all of these targets are being met. Like Scott mentioned earlier, in 2017, we conducted a citizen survey, and 90% surveyed thought that the overall quality of life in River Falls was positive, and 90% surveyed also reported being impressed and pleased with the responsiveness and knowledge of the city's customer service, which is actually a 5% increase over the 2015 results. The third goal is promoting economic vitality, and the total building permits for 2017 totaled $21.9 million, which exceeds the targets for that initiative. And the St. Croix Valley Business Innovation Center will have, is on track to have its soft opening on February 1. And like Danielle Campo mentioned last council meeting in her presentation, the grand opening will be April 12. So connecting community members is the fourth strategic plan goal, and on September 19, council, you approved a resolution approving the Glen Park Pavilion preliminary designs. Since then, a 65% design review meeting was held with the park board on November 15, and a 95% design review meeting was held on January 17. So staff will be bidding the project soon, and we'll be sending it to council for an award of contract in March or April. And finally, the last strategic goal is considering future generations. Green power sales has increased to 10%, which is what our goal has been for the past few years. And we also continue to be number one in the state and number four nationally for customer participation and purchasing renewable energy.
Was that number five last year?
Yeah, so we've moved up a spot. So, the next report will be in April, and the next presentation I will give will be in July. But with that, does the council have any questions?
I've got a question.
Or comments?
I've got, well, I've got some comments, too, that should surprise everybody. The, I talked with, with staff about this a little earlier, too, but we've got, I'm not going to have a hard time finding it, but we've got the job growth, oh, here it is, encourage job growth under the strategic planning for promote economic vitality. I have no doubt that our activities and our growth with new businesses are doing that. The problem has become is we can't, we can't come up with a measurable way to do that. I've been around the strategic plan since 2015, when it was put in place, and it's never had a goal. And I think it's time for us to remove that from the, from the process, and either come up with another, something we can measure. And again, I don't want to by any means say that we shouldn't, we shouldn't encourage job growth, but if we can't measure it, we just, we need to move on to something else. So that would be my one comment. There's some comments in, regarding the, regarding the Kenny, I'm sorry, regarding boundary agreement discussions, and I know that there was a, there was a inadvertent, didn't include the town of Kenny in there. And I know that coming up, we've, we've got a target on there for the town of Clifton. In general, I think the report is good, and I, I look at it every, every time we get it, but I think it's time that we spend some time on the report. There's a lot of references to the 2015 implementation of this, and we're here in 18, and I think it's time, I think it's time that we, as a council, consider, and I think that was the plan, to come back to this in a workshop and go through it a little bit more, and see if these goals are still valid. Some of these goals may be a little bit more, may need to move, because we've achieved, we've, we've done a better job of achieving things. So if this is going to be a valid, a valid document for us to use, I think we need to, I think we need to put some effort into it in a workshop and polish it up a little bit. Those are my comments. Good points.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you, Carrie.
Yeah.
Okay, next move on to administrator's report. If anybody's got any questions for Scott, or Scott, if you've got anything for us?
Well, I haven't got an official snowfall total, which I've been asked a couple times today, so, sorry I didn't do my homework on that, but it was a lot. I thought crew did a great job of, with it, appreciate the comments from the council, that means a lot to us as staff. We are striving to be the, the best place around for snow removal. Certainly, there's things that we do differently than other communities, but overall, we've tried to do a fair and equitable and efficient job of getting the snow removed, which I think we, I think we do a good job of, so. We'll continue to review that priority routing, that always gets, that's a big topic of questions from citizens, even though, about why is my street a number three and not a number one? So we kind of work on that as best we can, again, as staff, to try to do that. And I think the indication we've got from councils that you think our priorities are appropriate and correct, so we'll keep working that way. But again, kudos to staff, we, we really do have a team approach here, so we don't have a snow department. We have a city staff, and it's pretty much all hands on deck, although they wouldn't let me drive a truck, which is a good idea, so. Spring primary, we've got upcoming dates of importance, February 13, there is council meeting, but there's also a 5 o'clock workshop for fiscal plan. And February 20, then, there's a spring primary election at 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And the spring primary elections will be held, let's see, state offices are for judges. In the city, we have a district for primary to narrow from three to two candidates. I think that's the items I wanted to highlight, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Anybody got anything for Scott? No? Okay. On to comptroller's report.
This is the comptroller's report for December 2017. Our preliminary year-end general fund revenues were $9,762,770, with expenditures of $9,752,939 for a net budget surplus of $9,831. The 2017 budget had included the use of $525,000 of fund balance for succession planning purposes. However, no fund balance has been used as of this report, which leaves the fund balance in a stronger position at the end of 2017 than once anticipated. Additional costs will likely be allocated to 2017 as final invoices and expenses are received and recorded.
Thanks, Diane. Okay, the only other thing I have is, I'd like the council to look favorable on an appointment I want to make to the Business Improvement District. I'd like to reappoint Sherri Frisbee through December of 2020.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of your appointment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?